Well, welcome, everyone, to this workshop meeting of the Board of Ed. Let's please rise and say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Mnemon?
Here.
Vice President Clemens?
Here.
Trustee Daley?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Trustee Schwartz?
Here.
Okay. So, we'd like to welcome all of our new staff members, as well as all of our booster and Haldane School Foundation and PTA representatives that are here this evening. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowers.
Okay, so we have some thank yous tonight and some introductions. And actually, I think I'm going to wait for the thank yous and maybe see if people come in. But we do have a number of new faculty and staff members here that we would like to introduce to you, for those of you who may not have met them in the past, or for the first time are meeting them. So, we're going to start with our new school resource officer. So, it's kind of a big surprise. So, you're going to have to come up and just, and I don't know if, feel free to say something if you would like, or we have a little present for you, a little flower welcoming you to Haldane. So, this is Charles Johnson, and he, at the last, at the last board meeting, he did introduce himself, but we're introducing all the new people. So, if you want to just say hello, and he's our new resource officer.
Hello. New SRO, happy to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome, Charlie. Okay, we have two new principals, who you may have seen pictures or read about, or maybe even had the opportunity to speak to them, but David Wallach, our principal for the elementary school. David, if you'd like to come on up.
Thank you for the flowers. I think my wife will probably enjoy these more than I will. Really glad to be here. Hopefully, we're off to a really good start. And those of you I've met, those who haven't met, we'll be doing a lot together as time goes on. Thank you.
We have Mary Ann Silke, our new middle school principal.
Thank you, everyone. We've had a very exciting opening to the new school year, and there's no way that a school leader can do that alone. So, thank you all for your warm welcome.
So, moving on to the high school, we have our new physics teacher, Karen Lynch. Karen?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for all your gracious support, and we had a great start to the year, and I'm looking forward to more. Thank you.
Our new fifth grade teacher, John Bernstein.
I'm really thrilled to join a team, and thanks again, and looking forward to a great year.
Our fourth grade teacher, Alena Weed.
Hello to all who I haven't met. Haldane has been wonderful so far. Everybody has been very, very supportive, and the students are great, so I'm ready for a really great year.
Our new art teacher, Angela Bronco.
It's been a dream so far. I'm literally pinching myself every day, so thank you.
Our new band teacher, Jessica Stein.
It's been great rehearsing with all the bands so far, and I think it's going to be a great year with them. Thank you.
And our new prevention educator, Rachel Formally.
I've met so far has been extremely welcoming, and I'm really looking forward to starting off the school year with you guys. Thank you.
So, welcome to all our faculty and staff. We also have a number of thank yous going out. Talk about great timing. We would like to, a special thank you to our Haldane School Foundation. As you know, that they have now raised an excess of $1 million for the district, and no matter where you look in the district, you're going to see the reflection of the foundation and the things that they support. So, thank you, and we are welcoming Mr. Matthew Koch, the treasurer for the Haldane School Foundation. So, if you wouldn't mind coming down, we have a flower for you. And we have two representatives here tonight from the Haldane Arts Boosters, Pam Gunther and Corey Reister, so if you would come down and get your goodies.
Arts Booster would just love to thank the support of the board, and we hope for a great arts year with our new arts staff, and we're really excited to do a lot of great artistic stuff here at Haldane.
Thank you for your support. And we also would like to thank the Haldane PTA for all their support. Eileen Dennehy, she may be coming in later, but if she doesn't, I'd like to send a special thank you for, to all the representatives of the Haldane PTA, and all of the support that they give us as well. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. We would also like to thank the Haldane PTA Executive Committee Officers, all of the Haldane School Foundation Executive Committee Officers, the Haldane Blue Devils Booster Club, the Haldane Arts Boosters, and all their representatives, and all the new faculty and staff for being here. So, welcome to the Haldane family. So, we are going to take a five-minute break. We have some goodies next door, if you just want to get up, and so people can introduce themselves to you now, and then we'll be back.
I just want to also thank all the support that you have given us so far. I've heard great things so far, and very appreciative. I also would like to give special thanks to the PTA, School Foundation, Arts Boosters, and Sports Booster Club, because without you, all the extracurriculars would really not be happening. So, really appreciate all the hard work and effort that goes into it. Thank you.
Okay, we're back. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and, are we going to move into the presentation at this point? Okay. Did you want to introduce?
Sure. So, just so people understand kind of how we arrange what we're about to see, which is a kind of a presentation of our special ed department. Each year, there's funding that's placed in the budget for us to do an analysis or an audit of different components within our district. And last year, mid-year, we began to put some of those funds towards a special education audit, to look at our entire special ed system, to see if there's anything that some outside consultants could do to recommend things, to support things, to give us our, an understanding of what we already knew, that our special ed department is in good shape. And we have Michael, Dr. Michael Neiman, from the Futures Education Group, that conducted the audit for us last year, and he's going to, he's here tonight to give us kind of an overview of what he found. Towards the end of the year, we also began, we began an audit for our Transportation Department, and that is still in the works, and we'll probably have somebody presenting the findings of the transportation audit within November, December range. So, at this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Michael Neiman, and he will give us an understanding of our special ed department at Haldane.
Good evening. So, I just want to acknowledge the other folks that were part of this analysis. Mr. McGuire, he was in the field with me. He helped with the field work. We'll talk a little bit about what that looked like. But John was very much a big part of this analysis, and David Boyle. When the board gets report, you'll see it's quite data-intensive. There's a big piece devoted to analyses, workload analyses, comparative analyses, and David in our office was very helpful for that, so I want to acknowledge his contributions. Also, want to thank the superintendent, the board, for having us in the district. We are NISCUS partners. We do this work all over the state, all the way from Montauk to Buffalo, and all points in between. And we very much enjoy the partnership with NISCUS, because we think that, you know, providing special ed services to children obviously is of paramount importance, and we very much appreciate the opportunity to support the district and the staff. And want to thank the staff, for the folks, we know that they're new faces, some new faces tonight, but when we were here in the spring, people made us feel very welcome. All the principals, all the staff, everyone was very forthcoming and professional, so we just want to acknowledge the district as well. So, the primary purposes of this workshop are to present the pertinent information for contextual services. Sort of a hybrid, where we want to present issues pertaining to special education, special ed law, although perhaps you've seen some of this before, in the context of what we found in the district. So, again, we want to provide an overview of what is special ed, what's its purpose, and again, in the context of the findings that were specific to the district. Going to provide key findings, provide corresponding areas of opportunity. We don't say areas of opportunity, a spin doctoring. We presented to a board last year, and the board chair said he wishes that his wife use the word areas of opportunity to work on himself. So, yes, we could, we could say, you know, recommendations, but we really do see this, because we really see ourselves as partners in all districts could, like all of us, like any entity, could improve, and I think this is a district that is striving to improve. So, I think our areas of opportunity, as you'll see, is sort of a story that's not yet written, because a lot of our actual recommendations are things that have happened or are happening right now, so it's very exciting. And to provide a forum for discussion, although at the end, we'll have a time for the board for any questions. We really, I really want this to be an opportunity for you to ask questions throughout any slide, any time that I'm not crystal clear, that never happens. I want you to ask me, or feel free to ask any questions throughout. So, the specific areas under review, when we started the partnership with the district, there were four areas that leadership wanted us to look at. The continuum of services, and we'll talk about that, what does that mean? Organizational structure and district coordination of programs, related services, that's your OT, physical therapy, psychology, those are services that are related to the student's IEP. And utilization of paraprofessional supports, that might be a new term, paraprofessional. It's really any instructional staff that's not certified. Each district will, might call this class of, you know, personnel, different things, instructional aides, instructional assistants. We've been in some school districts where there are tiers of instructional assistants based on education. So, when we say paraprofessional, parareducator, it's really any non-certified staff member. And we are specific to special education. These are ones that have been funded and support special education. We realize in the district, there might be paraprofessional teachers assistants that support AIS, or, you know, might be library assistants, whatever that might be. This was specific to those staff that support special education. So, when we think about how to present information, both in our presentation, our presentation tends to parallel the report, we try, we try to find constructs, or things that sort of fall under similar categories. So, when we look at how we saw the data, we saw that in falling basically under climate, culture, and organizational considerations, that's one main area that we'll talk about tonight, and continuum of supports, which is basically how our students are struggling, not necessarily students with just IEPs, but students who are struggling, how are they supported within the district? Our methodology, oops, how did we arrive at our conclusions? Well, a big piece of this was confidential interviews. We interviewed 27 staff, and for a small district, we feel pretty good about that sample size. It was a mix of central office staff, school-based leaders, your principals, certified special and gen ed teachers, parareeducators, your TAs and aides, and related service providers. All the questions were catered to the interviewees' area of expertise. So, although there were some common questions, we asked everybody, the first question we asked is climate and culture, is this a sense of ownership? We'll get into that. We also asked questions that were specific to principals, to teachers assistants, to speech pathologists, that were just under their area of expertise. Nonevaluated site visits to schools and programs, we did walkthroughs. This program was not an audit in the sense that no one was being evaluated, we didn't have any, you know, mandate to evaluate any special ed teachers or general ed teachers. Our walkthroughs were just to get contextual information, to see what that continuum of services looked like at each school. Again, they were nonevaluated, we had no clipboards, we had no paper. We just wanted to understand how services were provided to kids. Comparative analysis, you'll see, we're going to spend some time on charts today. We really want to see, how does Haldane compare to other districts in terms of staffing? Is it a generous staffing model? Is it a not generous staffing model? And even though New York does not disaggregate a lot of the data, we have the luxury of having that, because we've done so many studies in New York, we actually have a database. And then document reviews, it was pretty rich in that portion of the qualitative analysis. We did a cross-section of 30 IEPs, again, no student, no student names were revealed, but it was a way for us to understand how our services being delivered to students. So, we talked, I guess this is more the pedantic or the teaching part of the workshop tonight, just to kind of provide a programmatic orientation of how we see the continuum of supports. Interventions, tiered-one supports are for all students, again, universal best practices based on research for all kids, whether it's behavior, ELA, math, and then special ed. It used to be special ed was a silo, right? We used to think, well, a child has an IP, they're going to get these services, and that's all there was. But it's really healthy, and I think the district certainly feels this way, is how does the continuum of services look, all the way in gen ed to special ed and all points in between? Because special ed is not, is not a place, it's not a silo. It's one more tool in the toolbox for schools to support kids. Then we have educational environments, all the way from gen ed to added district placements. And I think when Dr. Showa was going to talk a little bit about the continuum, you'll understand what that looks like in the context of those placements. This really, I think this graph tells the story of what is a good special ed program. At the end of the day, a special ed program meets the needs of a child horizontally. In other words, it helps the child achieve grade level expectations, because remember, special ed is not a place. It's a service to help students with disabilities achieve the same expectations as general ed students. Also, meaningful inclusion, I heard quite a bit in the district about how students with disabilities are included. They're part of the school culture, they're part of the school community, they're included in proms, they're included in sports, there's, you know, they are part of the fabric of the school. So, it's not just about academics, we know in the world we live in, student achievement is always sort of in the forefront. But when we think about horizontal alignment, it's not just student achievement, it's the experience children with disabilities are having at school. And then we go to vertical alignment. As students graduate from CPSC to CSE, from preschool to kindergarten, as they go from one grade to another, from school to another, is there a vertical alignment? Does the program continue to meet their needs? So, a really good special ed program really is one that meets the child horizontally and vertically as well. Not sure if this is new to the school board members, the RTI pyramid, but I'm going to give a little wrinkle to this, because it sets up what we're going to talk about later on. We think about RTI, your child study teams, as basically supporting students who are struggling, right? The thought is, we get them before they need special education, which is true. So, if you think about student A, maybe has behavioral issues or behavioral challenges, and student B has academic challenges, they're supported through that tiered system in theory, right, with more intensive individualized supports as they go up the tiered system. But I want you to take a snapshot of that picture, because when we think about RTI in a reverse model, I think that's going to be really helpful for you. Yes?
Explain RTI, its response to intervention.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm falling into acronyms. RTI, Response Intervention, it's a general ed initiative, basically, to support students with these tiered interventions across all areas. So, I want to open with our findings, climate, culture, and organizational considerations. I talked about the first question we asked interviewees was ownership. Are students with disabilities part of the school? Is it not, is it a sense of my kid, your kid, or is it all of our kids? And almost invariably, it was our kids. This is not special ed, this is not general ed, these are all kids. And I think those of you in the district who've been here a while know that's true. There's a culture that these are all our children, they're included. General ed kids, treat them just like any other kid, they're, you know, they're included, they're treated with respect. So, I don't think that's surprising that that perception of ownership is pervasive. And I want to talk a little bit about a statistic that kind of speaks to that. That graph shows the number, or the percentage of students that are in general ed, at least 80% of the time. New York State Education Association requires the states or the districts to roll up their data and talk about where are kids being educated with disabilities. That is the least restrictive environment. All things being equal, the federal language is to the greatest extent possible, students with disabilities should be with students without disabilities. If it's not meeting their needs, it's not the least restrictive environment. A lot of people think LRE is always general ed, it's not. But all things being equal, it is. And you can see that trend, where students with disabilities, again, it's somewhat antiquated data, because NICE is always a couple years behind the times, but you can see that nice trend based on the reported data, students with disabilities are spending more and more time in general ed with their non-disabled peers. Does anyone have any questions about that? Yes?
That's state data, that's not particular to Haldane, right?
Yes, that, that graph is specific to Haldane.
Oh, okay, thanks.
You're welcome. I, I should have made clear, it came from the state website, which is behind, but the data itself is Haldane data. Some more celebrations, those overseeing the CSE process, the Committee of Special Education, are ensuring that parents are partners. Again, special education can be very, it is complicated, New York especially. New York has, I think, 1,100 more pages than most states in their, in their manual, to make things a little idiosyncratic, but as much as special education can be very difficult, very challenging, very emotive at times, those conducting the CSE meetings, the teachers, the sub-CSE chairs, Dr. Showa, people are really seeing parents are partners, are included. And parents, of course, are part of that CSE team, they're very much a part of that CSE team. Staff are generally complimentary of the professional development, or PD, and resources that are available to them. The district has a nice program going on with a contract to a outside entity, which is helping the teachers, the integrated co-teaching teams, really build the tools in their toolbox, which is unusually, unusually nice, we haven't seen that a lot. So, clearly, this is a district that's really building capacity for those, those co-teaching teams. The central office leadership is viewed favorably, and is stacked within normal limits. So, again, we know, at least last year, Dr. Showa was new, but certainly, there's a lot of support for his work. And when we look at central office staffing, that's basically Tony, when we look at that based on a ratio, it's stacked within normal limits. So, when we think about all the CPSC, CSE students, and it's going to fluctuate about 120 students with disabilities, pre-K through 12, with one administrator, that falls right in line with New York's expectations. Talked about that comparative data in that first slide, what is comparative data? Well, I'm going to give you probably more than you care to see. I'd like to present these graphs and kind of talk about how we arrived at these graphs. And when you see the report, you're going to see an acronym, ARI, that's the availability ratio index. What it means is, how many, how many staff across the disciplines are available to students with disabilities? So, we take the 100, last, last spring when we ran the numbers, I don't think they've changed too much, but it was about 104 students with disabilities K through 12, and we divided that by the number of FTEs and staff across these disciplines, and we arrived an ARI number, and we could compare that with other similar district groups in New York. Similar district groups are ones of similar demographics. So, the red is Haldane. So, when we look at speech-language staff, there are two SLPs, so we just took the 104 and divided that by two, and we came up with 52. That isn't the SLP's caseload. What it means is, for every student, how many students with disabilities are there, and how many staff are there per that population? So, for every 52 students with disabilities, there's an SLP in the district available to that group. Again, it's not their caseload, but at least it gives us a ballpark of that staffing, so we can do an apples-to-apples comparison. As we get further down on the left, that's a more generous staffing level. As we get further to the right with the higher numbers, that's a leaner model, because there's less staff available for that number. So, Haldane is 52, again, that's, that's, that's a healthy number. And we're going to talk about this next one, occupational therapy, there's one FTE for the 103 students. So, how does that look? Does that, is that an area of opportunity, or is that a celebration? Well, let me tell you, we do special ed work all the way from California to Maine, and specialists, OT, psychology, physical therapy, speech language, they're extremely hard to find. So, in a way, this is a celebration, you've got, you've got an occupational therapy available to the group. Does it look like a more generous staffing than other Newark districts? Sure. But we're going to talk about ways to maybe mitigate that, and I think, again, this is, this can be managed. The good thing is you have staff, and not all districts can say that. Physical therapy is very leanly staffed. If you look at that, there's basically, because the PT is less than, less than a day, when we divide that 103 by the point, you know, 1, 7, 5, whatever it was, we came up with a ratio of 550. So, in other words, based on her limited time, or her reduced time, that's what that ratio would be. Does it mean that kids aren't getting physical therapy that needed? No. What it means is, this is meeting the need, and a lot of your students with higher needs are actually being served by physical therapists in both these programs. Does that make sense? So, again, this doesn't mean that students aren't being served, it just means this is what, this is what the district's need is being managed to right now. Psychology staff, psychology is a little different, we're not using the ARI. The numerator is not special ed students, the numerator is all students in the district. The reason is NASP, the National Association of School Psychologists recommends using all students. So, at this point, there's about 600 students for every psychology available, because there's one full-time, and then there's about a point-five on top of that, which comes out to a ratio of 600 students to one psychologist. Certified staff, again, it's a ratio of about 10. 10 students with disabilities for every certified special ed teacher, and that's right in line with what we would expect. And the non-certified special ed staff, 7.5, they're devoted to special education, that's leanly staffed, that's not as highly staffed as we would expect. So, in terms of areas of opportunity, on the organizational side, creating a school-based PT for special education, again, this is somewhat rear-view driving, this was, these were our bright ideas at the end of last spring, but we know that there's some exciting things happening, and Tony, I'm sure if you want to talk about all the things that are happening.
So, thanks, Dr. Mnemon. So, this recommendation came from the fact that a SEPTA, or a special ed PTA, I really like to use the microphone outside of the stand, like a stand-up comedian, the fact that a SEPTA actually does not exist in its truest terms, and so absent, you know, the information of our work with the Learning Differences Committee, that was, I guess, one of the wonderings left to explore. But thankfully, we do have a Learning Differences Committee, and exploring the absence of a SEPTA with Corey and Maeve realized that because of some guidelines from, from SEPTA that we don't actually qualify to have one for our little district. So, it's nice to have, this doesn't actually sound like it's picking up my voice, is it? Okay. Am I just not amplified? So, it's nice to have such an active committee working alongside my department, and, and having someone to brainstorm with, having a group of people to brainstorm with is, I think, just as great, if not even better, than a formal SEPTA, because we can be even more flexible, I think, than a traditional. I think those are all the points that I wanted to say about that. And also, I guess I'll also comment on the next point, because that's something we brought up earlier, is something actually that the Learning Differences Committee and I sat down and talked about over the summer, was having a much richer people personnel services page on our website. And that's something I did develop over the summer, and it's taken a point-five step towards 2.0. But as Dr. Bowers, I think you pointed out, maybe at a previous board meeting, that we're moving towards developing a much more robust website. So, I'm in the process of creating a wish list of things that will appear on our brand-new PPS page. Currently, it has a link to the PTA page, which has a link to learning differences, but it also has links for parents that has guides from federal and state on what IEPs are, and a whole guide to having a learning, a child who learns differently in school, and what your resources are, both in terms of the school environment and legal abilities.
Thank you. Would you mind just putting it back in?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
Thank you. And as Dr. Showa was saying, as he's talking about expanding the page, one of these areas could be, again, could be, because there's a lot the district could choose from, is supporting parents of students on the autism spectrum. You can see, I think, anyone in special ed knows, that those numbers are, are rising exponentially. You can see, I think, anyone in special ed knows that those numbers are rising exponentially. And here is the number of students with K through twelve. On the autism spectrum, in two thousand and four, it was about ten thousand, six hundred. In the last run of data from Childfine that became available in NICE ed, it's thirty-two thousand. So it's going up threefold. So talk about what ways could parents be supported? Perhaps it'd be, again, parents for students on the spectrum that could use it as a resource.
I could ask a question about that increase. Is that because there's actually just more students that are developing the disability? Or is it that it's being diagnosed differently?
Maybe all of the above. There's a lot of theories as to why it's happening. Could be that what, they couldn't figure out what before is now being, but I think there's no question that the prevalence is just skyrocketing beyond just the identification. But no one really, I'm not sure, Tony, please.
So I think about this actually quite a bit. Oh, now it's really picking me up. I think there are a lot of confounding variables at play there. One is that autism-related assessments have become more robust, have become more accurate. One, we might just be seeing an increase in the number of students or the number of children who actually do have autism. Another thing might be that as the DSM has gone through iterations, and we now have a different definition of what it means to be a person with autism, so there are a lot of factors out there that could be contributing to it. And as I was having a conversation with someone last week, that there used to be sort of a stigma, a perceived stigma, that having a student or a child classified with autism was prevalent in around, you know, two thousand and four. And so we might be seeing kids who might otherwise have other health impairment or one of the other thirteen classifications of disability as defined by the federal government now instead are being classified truly as students with autism. So there's quite a few factors out there.
Got it. Thanks.
Thanks, Tony. So some more areas of opportunity would be enhanced program descriptions to really be explicit as to what these programs look like, the continuum of services, not just ICT and DCT, but, you know, let's say in a special classroom, what does that look like so parents will know exactly what to expect? PLCs are professional learning communities, basically their forums where people get together and talk about best practices, how to support students. Again, something that's already happening, rear-view driving on my part, and I think Dr. Shoa and the leadership have been very thoughtful about making sure that the TAs are involved in student meetings, getting the training they need in behavioral supports to, again, help de-escalation, things like that. So, you know, as I reflect on that, I probably should have written, continue to provide PLCs because it's happening right now, basically. Redeploy OT for CPSC services. One of the things you saw was that the OT services are generously staffed. So one way maybe to kind of support, you know, or to use that resource is through CPSC. Right now, New York is unique in many ways. One of them is the counties provide the CPSC services, and either the state we've been in, it's the district. So this way, again, I don't want to presume the schedule, but one way to think about generous staffing is to redeploy those services to other functions within the district. One of those could be providing CPSC services, which would allow the district to pay the cost, and also to provide that vertical articulation, because then you'd have the same provider providing services from preschool to kindergarten.
I just have a question going back.
Yes.
Do you use the entire population versus those students that actually needed OT and PT?
The entire special ed population, right? That's our ratio versus what's on their caseload. One of the other opportunities is to institute guidelines. Again, as I read the IEPs, there's many good things which we'll talk about. One of the things I noticed with speech and language, again, it's not come from a bad place. It's the individualized education program. It's individualized to each student's needs. But there might be some ways to think about those services, because speech might be providing more minutes than are educationally necessary. So it might be a way to, again, rethink some of those minutes through exit and entry guidelines. Also, I think these are happening with OT and PT as well, so it would be right in line with some of these program descriptions and some of the other services that are being operationalized. Again, it's not to take the professionalism away from the provider, it just allows the district to have a little more uniformity and consistency in its provision of services. Now we're on to the continuum of supports, or continuum of support again. The continuum of services is an IDA construct, which we'll talk about. But if we rethink that construct into continuum of supports, we're no longer talking to special ed students, we're talking about students who are struggling, students that might need AIS or the HART program at the high school, students that might just need some other opportunities in school. So if we get away from thinking about just special ed and continuum of supports, it's a much, I think it's a much more robust conversation. So RTI, Response Intervention, with the Child Study Team, that's where, again, the school-based teams bring students that might be struggling, reflect on the students, start progress monitoring, reflect on their data. They kind of are really meant to be early intervening processes. One way to determine if RTI is taking hold is to look at the trend in special education population. It's not totally clean because there might be students that are moving into the district with IEPs that that's mandated, they need the service, there might be students that are moving out, there might be a whole bunch of variables. But all things being equal, an interesting way to look at RTI and CST is to look at the trend in special education. And you can see in fifteen, sixteen, it dipped a little bit. It dipped a percentage from fourteen to thirteen, which suggests, again, all things being equal, perhaps students are being accommodated in general ed before they go to CSE.
Can you remind me what CST stands for?
Child Study Team. Another way to look at if students are being appropriately identified is to look at the disability categories. Now, New York has thirteen disability categories, and we would call SLD, or what they're called learning disabilities now, specific learning disabilities, learning disabilities, SLI, speech-language impairment, and OHI, other health impaired. Those are your, excuse me, those are your high-frequency, low-needs special ed categories. Students that might have multiple disables, that are wheelchair-bound, that have significant cognitive impairments, students on autism spectrum, students with hearing impaired, visual impaired. That's fairly straightforward. These students, depending on, you know, what's happening, could be presumably accommodated in general ed, and that's why we really take a look at those students. So if you look at the district's classification compared to the county and state, it's pretty much in line, perhaps a little higher in learning disabilities, about three percent higher than the state average. SLI, speech-language impairment, about where you'd expect county-wide anyway, and other health impaired. A little higher, but again, in the ballpark. What that suggests is we're not seeing huge overclassifications in those areas. When we see that spike, that tends to tell us sometimes RTI or Child Study Team, it's called different things in other districts, SST, SIT, you name it. Any acronym you can think of, it's called Child Study Team here. So that was, that was good to see. The district does provide a full continuum of services. Now we're getting away from services, continuum, this specific students of special education needs. I'm not sure, Tony, if you want to just give the group a snapshot of what's happening now?
So having come from New York City, which is where I began my career, and just leave it here, New York City, obviously, with the largest school system in the United States, has an extraordinary, extraordinarily broad continuum of services. So that's something that I was accustomed to. Coming to Haldane, expecting to have it much more limited since it's a small district, I was actually pleasantly surprised that we have such a relatively contextually broad continuum within our very small district. So I'm going to try not to refer to any acronyms. I'll try to spell everything out. But going from most restrictive environment, which would be most removed from the general education population to least restrictive, I'll just sort of give a brief description of each. So at Haldane, the most restrictive environment is what we call self-contained class or special class. That's for students who have the most intensive learning and/or behavior needs. They require a small class, fewer peers. They may have indicated on examinations or evaluations, psychological or educational, that their cognitive abilities are much more earlier developed than their peers, and so they need modified curriculum, maybe a slower presentation or re-presentation of material. So that would be our most restrictive environment at Haldane. It doesn't vary too much other than, in other districts or even nationally, than that, other than to have specialized schools. And actually, that was my first teaching experience, was in a self-contained special education school in the South Bronx, which obviously we don't have here. We just have self-contained classrooms. So for our students who exhibit extraordinarily intensive needs, that we don't have the resource to meet at Haldane, we do have some, just about, you know, a handful of students who go out of district for specialized schools that are self-contained. So next along the continuum is the big, the big one, ICT. And ICT is integrated co-teaching, where you have a general education teacher and a special education teacher working in partnership in various different formats to present the material to students who have IEPs and students who do not have IEPs in the same classroom setting, which is really and arguably perhaps ideal for all kids because it builds empathy with social constructivism, presumed competence. It's great for kids to learn from one another in small groups that are either homogeneously done or heterogenously done, so that they can mentor and be mentored by one another. So that's a really great program that we have at Haldane that's relatively new. I want to say maybe three or four years ago it was first introduced. And is Dr. Nyman, yeah? Yeah? No? Long ago?
Different grades, different times.
Yeah, but now is...
More secondary over the last few years.
But now is K-11, right? We have ICT K-11.
Good.
Yep. Which is pretty phenomenal for a district of this size, which, you know, basically means we need a full-time teacher in all these classrooms, all the way from K up. So it's a great middle ground for kids who might have been moved more restrictive, but they can now be educated alongside the general ed. So less restrictive than ICT is what we call consultant teacher. And consultant teacher can take two forms, either direct or indirect. Consultant teachers basically are a special education teacher that pushes into the general education environment. So a child would be educated in general education and then have extra support by a special education teacher who pushes in a minimum of two hours a week to consult with them directly or indirectly with their general education teacher on any areas of challenges they might have. And I think that about covers it. We also have something called Resource Room. Resource Room is often suggested for kids who are in ICT or maybe moving between a more restrictive to a less restrictive environment and need a little bit of extracurricular support. Resource Room is a five-to-one ratio, so you've got a teacher and five kids. Those needs can be, you know, fairly diverse in the Resource Room, but it's small enough by design that the Resource Room teacher, who's a special ed teacher, would be able to meet all of their learning needs, whether it's ELA and math, other core subjects, or just the basic executive functions like processing speed, working memory, that sort of thing, that they would be able to get coached on, on a daily or every other day basis. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Longitudinal analysis reveals that students with disabilities are achieving, when we look at, again, have they met AYP? It changed a few years ago, Tony, I believe, to a growth model versus just the AYP model. But basically, how are students with disabilities doing on those Regents tests? And it reveals that some years might not be as high as others, but when we compare the district's achievement for the special ed subgroup compared to others, it actually compares quite favorably. The graduation rates are really commendable. When you look at that far right especially, the last cohort that was reported was the two thousand and ten cohort, that's the group of, a group of students they started tracking their freshman year in two thousand and ten, that eighty-eight percent of those students with disabilities graduated with a degree. That compares to the county average of seventy-one and the state average of about fifty. So going back, what is special ed? Special education is a service to help kids achieve. At the end of the day, graduation's a big deal. And again, it's a district that's very reflective, always wants to do things better. I don't think, this is a district that's satisfied with eighty-eight percent. I think everyone would want a hundred percent. But when you step back and you think about all the challenges to graduation, compare it to how other districts are doing, that's actually a really commendable percentage.
The denominator for that is a percentage of kids with IEPs?
The graduation?
High-grade entry?
Yes. That eighty-eight percent is all the students with IEPs at the secondary level, that cohort in that one year, how many of that hundred percent graduated?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So areas of opportunity is we get ways to reflect again. We talked about Child Study Team and RTI. A really good way to use Response Intervention or Child Study Team data is to talk about referrals to Committee on Special Education, to take that data and reflect on it. Why is that powerful? Because presumably, if students are being accommodated in the tiered interventions, remember that pyramid? If they're being accommodated, then there should be less students referred because they're being addressed in those tiered interventions. So this is actually a district in the Hudson Valley, and that one is one percent, that two is two percent. And you can see the trend line. They, in fourteen-fifteen, they went from one-point-five of the total student body that was referred to CSE to one percent. And that's a big number. That point-five represents the entire school population. That's a big number. That's very powerful information. Another good information or piece of information to collect from RTI is the percentage of students who qualified. In other words, if you think about from the medical model, false positives and false negatives, false positives are people that were given a diagnosis that didn't need it, right? And false positives in special ed would be students that had special ed that didn't need it, that were qualified for special ed or didn't need it. In this case, a false positive would be a student who went to CSE who didn't need, who was a DNQ. They went through all the testing, and they did not need special education. And you know how, if any of you have been in the CSE process, you know how labor-intensive that is for an evaluation, for the child to miss all that instructional time, the meeting, all that, all that labor, all that missed instructional time for the child, like the child can never get back. To have a child not qualify for CSE once they're referred, it's a big deal, right? So a good way to track that is percentage of students who qualified. The thought is, the students with a strong CST and RTI program, you should have a higher classification rate, right? Less false positives, because these children truly are disabled because they went through an authentic RTI/CSE process with fidelity. Continue to refine RTI to ensure consistency and continuity across the district. We talked a little bit about that. We talked about declassifying students. It should be the goal of everyone in that CSE team to put themselves out of business with every child, right? We know some students, again, with significant disabilities, students on the autism spectrum, with multiple disabilities, will have IEPs to twenty-two, to the day they graduate, and that's appropriate. That's what they need. But again, there might be some students there with just learning challenges that aren't truly special ed, but just needed that, you know, that one, two, three years of strategies, of expertise in special ed, and need not be forever, right? So one way, how do we support students? The question is, if not special ed, then what? How do we reach these children? Perhaps using RTI or CST as a step-down, right? Remember, we talked about RTI, excuse me. RTI is a step-up, but RTI can be used as a step-down. What if a child can fall into tiered interventions and get exactly what they need in ELA, math, and behavioral support? It's a very powerful model, and there's no reason why they can't follow the tiered interventions and exit special education. So that's an extremely powerful and robust model. Continue to work on writing IEPs that are internally consistent, measurable, and attached to student need. Part of the methodology, I talked about the IP reviews. I actually reviewed thirty IEPs, and it was a very nice sample size, almost thirty percent of the entire school population, students with disabilities. Now, there was much to commend with those IEPs. Again, there could be more work, and there could be more work for all of these. We do this work across the country, writing a cohesive, quantifiable IEP. It's, if anyone's a Star Trek fan here, it's The Final Frontier. It's the last thing really that special ed teachers tend to master, because it's extremely difficult to write something. You know, it's the stranger test. Can you pick up an IP and know the child almost instantaneously if you were to cover? That's, that's the, that's sort of the litmus test for a great IEP. And again, there was much to commend, but especially in math, social studies, and science, to see goals that were more linked to common core would have, certainly is an area of opportunity. And I think, Tony, as you talk about refining the IP system and internal systems with dropdowns, I think that's actually happening right now. Establish reverse mainstreaming for all special ed classrooms.
Yeah.
Oh, please.
I have a question regarding the IEP component.
Yeah.
Did your audit look at student goal mastery data in terms of success in an IEP? So we look at graduation as one, what component of success for students?
Yeah.
Students with disabilities who graduate according to their IEP. But did you look at students who are exited out of, how often are students exited out of special ed? Is it based solely on graduation? Is it based on RTI? Or what did the master, goal mastery data look like?
Yeah. Well, I'll answer that in two ways. One, did we look at goals? We were looking at the wording of the goals themselves. So were the LA goals linked, you know, reading a passage at the ninth grade level... So, were the LA goals linked, you know, reading a passage at the ninth grade level attached to this rubric? Was it attached to basically grade-level expectations? It was binary. But we didn't necessarily see that a lot in some of the other goals, like, you know, Johnny will, you know, read a social studies paragraph, but it wasn't necessarily attached to mastery of the social studies grade-level expectation. To answer your other question about exit, I think we just have a number, I believe, it was three or four this past year of students being declassified?
It was few, and I don't have any longitudinal data beyond my own experience. Do I need to say that?
No, I can't hear you.
Okay.
Anybody, do you want to answer?
Sure. So, I don't have any longitudinal data on that. It's something that I could produce if we were curious about it, but from my experience as CSE chair last school year, it was between three and five students, I want to say. So, that's about a rough percentage, actually, because we have about 110, 110, 120 classified students, so about 3% to 5% approximate.
Sorry?
And that's, and that's not due to exit. So, that's, that's not due to exit, that's aside from students who exit high school. It's just from the CSE process, declassified as per CSE determination. Okay?
And just so you know, that was a question that we were talking about today, and as we were preparing for this tonight, that was a question that the district is also asking. That is a question that the district is also asking.
And then, another area of opportunity is to establish reverse mainstreaming for all special ed classrooms. Again, we talked about, students with disabilities certainly are included, they feel welcomed to part of the school fabric. One of the things that we've talked about is maybe having an actual peer program where high school students get credit for being with students with disabilities, running a project, being like a best buddy, but actually quantifying that for credit. So, I think the district is really well on its way to have something like that because the culture already exists with students, with staff, to make students feel included. This would just be one more tool in the toolbox for the district to help kind of quantify or capture more reverse mainstreaming. Some final thoughts, again, when we think about, I guess, the fiscal piece of special ed. This was interesting data to look at, the cost per student, for, per special ed student. The district has actually dipped below the similar district group in terms of the cost per student, just over $36,000 per student. So if we think about resources, special ed, again, as Superintendent said, is one aspect of the delivery system, just like any other aspect, that there's a certain amount of resources devoted to special education. Students for the most part are achieving, there are some areas of opportunities we talked about, but for the most part, I would say students with disabilities in the district are getting what they need, they're getting a very meaningful experience, they're achieving grade-level expectations for the most part, they're graduating at a rate much higher than other districts and statewide. And the district is doing it actually, when you looked at that staffing, 85% of school budgets is based on staffing, and you saw a lot of those bars, whether in the middle or less highly staffed than expected. Kids are achieving, in the district, is actually, when you look at the expenditures, so I'd say it's quite an efficient organization when you think about the return on investment. The investment is the resources devoted to special education, and the return is how are kids doing? They're doing quite well. So, reiteration of priority areas, there was a lot, I think, to digest, but if we were to pick out four ones that might be at the top of the list, they would be to ensure more specific learning forums for the TAs. Again, I might say continue to do that, Tony, because you're doing it, because the TAs are the frontline workers, they're the ones with the kids, you know, more than the teachers. But make sure they have the capacity to do their job really well, and you've got some really talented TAs. Just to continue to provide that, that capacity building is critical. Review the plausibility of a special ed PTA. Tony talked about the LDCs already, and I think things are well on their way to include parents, both parents that, you know, I think need more investment in the CSE process, as well as those that might need more education on LRE and FAP and some of the more nuanced areas of special ed law. Create program descriptions, as well as entry and guidelines for related services, again, which are happening. But again, we think those are really important priority areas, and the focus on writing measurable, cohesive, and legally defensible, defensible IEPs. IEPs are legal documents to help children achieve educational benefit, in other words, to make progress in their curriculum. And legally defensible ones are ones that are written, that are cohesive, measurable, attached to common core, to your question, that are attached to common core across all content areas. So, that rounds out my discussion, and I will open it up to questions.
Are there any questions from the audience? Sorry. Any additional questions from the audience?
Yes, please.
And... My name is Andrea McHugh. I am, I'm a special ed teacher. I teach special ed in the high school. And I have a question about the chart where you're talking about the percentage, you had the two charts, which is the percentage of the referrals to CSE, the Committee for Special Education, and as well as the percentage of students who qualified for special ed. I was a little unclear about what that data tells us?
Sure.
And what we should do, I mean, are you, because it looks like it's sort of flatlining here, approximately 0.75%, right? If I'm reading that bottom graph correctly. So, I guess I'm just a little unclear about what is, is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? What is the goal here? Should that be higher? Should it be lower? I'm just, that's something that I'm just not clear on.
Sure. I'll answer that.
Okay.
Good question. So, this is actual data from another district in the Hudson Valley. This is actual data of a district that rolled up all their data across all schools. So this is metadata, this isn't one school, this is the entire district. So, what they said was, aha, look, our, the top one, the referrals to CSE actually went down. They took that, and I take that as a good thing, it means that the children were being accommodated through tiered interventions, so the number of students being referred for actual testing went down.
We'll be more careful with those girls.
Yeah. However you want to look at it, right? That bottom one is almost a corollary chart, it's the number of students that, once they were referred, how many qualified for special education. And that 0.5 is, is 50%. It's not, it's not 0.5 of one.
Oh, okay.
So that one represents 100.
Oh.
And I'm sorry, I was not, I was not clear.
That's where the question came from.
Yeah. So, in that, in that district, almost 75% of all students that went to CSE were classified, meaning the false positives went down.
Okay. Would we have this data for our district? Are we able to get this data for our district?
I, I think it would be, right? Well, I, I think the mechanisms exist to collect this data. This is just one of our recommendations for how one might reflect on the data, but I would think it would be, it would be rolled up pretty easily.
It'd be nice to be able to compare, I guess, is what I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your results, and thank you. We just love the Director of Special Education, he's been awesome and a really great hire here, another one. But what I'm asking for, and maybe you covered this, I was a little bit late, was, you know, why was there no qualitative data collected as far as, and what I mean about that, I mean as far as parents' experience of having a child go through the special education system here, and also the students' experience of actually being in the classroom. I mean, I understand the trending and how it has to match the common cores, and all of this is really wonderful as you speak, you know, it's great for how things are now going to work in special education, and it's super clear that we have to follow those guidelines just like every other public school in New York, and that's really wonderful. But what I think makes all the differences in the world is that information. Like, how has it been? What has your experience been here? What happened to you, what was the process?
You said you, you said you came in late, I will reflect a little bit, I'm not sure if you saw the slide. In terms of the qualitative methodology, did you see that?
That's from staff.
Yes. Oh, you're asking about parents and students.
Yeah.
I will answer that.
Okay, okay.
Would you like me to?
Sure, sure.
Each, each engagement with a district is unique, and we have to decide what would best answer these four. There we go. These are the four areas that were agreed upon.
I'm just gonna get on this, okay.
I'm sorry.
Your back is fine.
Okay. It's my better side. Our methodology was based on, you know, the partnership and what we decided. We have, we have included parents in the past, we've sometimes interviewed students in the past, but in order for the district to realize these questions with the resources that we had to do it, those, they were not included as part of the interviews.
Okay, so there was a choice made. Because what I'm saying is that it so impacts really the numbers, because I have found, having been here 13 years and having gone through it for many years, that what really impacts the students is not necessarily, although it does help, and there are many wonderful teachers and lots of good things happening in the school, is that the kids who have actually done the best have had a lot of outside resources that have complemented the school. For example, outside testing that was done, outside expert tutoring that was done in various ways, that really supplemented what was happening in the school, and I think is very supportive of those high numbers of graduation and the ways in which the school is commendable. And I think that that is something to really think about, you know, like, why are people doing that instead of investing their time and energy in, in the school in different ways?
Thank you.
Can I ask Dr. Shoah and Dr. Bowers how you guys feel about the, the areas of opportunity, the suggestions that have been made for improvement? Do you feel like those are things that, you, do you agree with them? Do you feel like those are, are things that we can do, should do? I know Dr. Newman said that some of them were in motion already, but it's not necessary that the school, you know, agrees with all of the recommendations or thinks they're feasible. So, I'm curious what you guys think about the path forward? Like, what is it, where does this information leave us? Does, do you feel like the recommendations that were made are, are good ones? Do you feel like they're things we can do? Do you think that it, has it led you to other things? Where are you guys at with the process?
Yeah, that's a great question, because Dr. Nyman alluded to it a little bit, that as he was developing this presentation, we were having discussions, and so he would come up with some items that he would put into his areas of opportunity, and I would be like, oh, that's a great idea, and I know that, you know, Corey and Maeve and I had several conversations, and a lot of that just sort of sprang all at once, and the reason he said that these things were ongoing is because he would sort of like have a discussion with me about something, and then I would sort of bounce it off you guys, and we would say, oh, yeah, maybe, you know, this sounds like a good idea, why don't I, you know, kind of put this in motion specifically about ongoing supports for the aides? I think that was something that, because my eyes were fresh and his eyes were fresh, and just sort of being trained as a program evaluator, coming in and just, and looking around and actively listening to all constituents, and I think that's where you leave off and I pick up, is, you know, trying to be as receptive as possible to our parent community and how they are receiving our services and what their thoughts are about how we can improve. And so, getting to that piece about having the age be more integral to our training process and, as, as sort of like the, almost the primary points of contact for a lot of the kids, that was a big one. Something that Dr. Bowers and I just, you know, from working with our staff, had talked about the entry and exit criteria, and that's something that came up when we were increasing our OT from 0.6 to 0.8 and then to 1.0, is talking about if we're going to do this, we need to do it right and make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable for the services we provide, and that we're not just having kids languish in related services, that if they enter, it's because they meet a certain criteria, if they exit, it's because they are measured for a certain period of time, they exit by the same criteria. So these are conversations that sort of came about, and they, they rang true, because as we were discussing them and developing this presentation, it was all sort of rolling along and happening at the same time. So I wouldn't say the, the areas of opportunity do or don't feel like they have validity because we've already started to do most of them, and just by practice, they, that's self-validated, I suppose. Other areas, what were the, can you go back to the slide that has the other areas? I want to say, the areas of opportunity, I want to, just a visual reminder. Yeah, program descriptions, like I was saying, you know, we, we talked over the summer about having a better website, and so the Learning Differences Committee had some ideas for me about how to embellish and enhance what kind of information we give to parents, because as a parent of a special child, I know that it can be tough. I mean, I have the advantage of being an educator, but showing up to a committee on special ed where you're just one member out of a whole table of folks who are spouting acronyms and alphabet soup, and you're like, wait, what? You know, hold the phone for a second. I know it can be intimidating and feel sort of exclusive, like you're, you know, stepping into an existing club and that nobody quite has the time to give you an entry point, so that's something that I'm very sensitive to. So, making what we do much more transparent, just as we're doing now, I hope, is important to me. OT, redeploying OT, I think that's an area of challenge for our department right now because, as also noted with speech, speech and language, the amount of services that we're giving, especially at the lower school, in the elementary, is very strong, like, we're, we've got a lot of services for those kids down, in the elementary school. A lot of it's building level, so a lot of it's preventative work. So, developing the entry and exit criteria for that, I think, is an area of focus for us, because we want to make sure that the kids are getting the services that they need, but at the same time, we need to make sure that if they are, if their degree of need is reducing, that we scaffold that off and get them back into the general ed environment so they're not pulled out and missing primary instruction. So everything, you know, we, you know, as, as this sort of program review went on, we sort of developed it, and I picked up on those recommendations and just ran with it. So, like I said, it's sort of self-validating. Yeah. Do you feel the same, Dr. Bowers?
Yes. Just a couple of things to add. I mean, we, we chose the special ed audit because it was a place to start the conversation, and we have an idea of how our system is working, and it's nice to see it validated. One of the things we've been focusing on over the last many years is really to look at making sure we have an appropriate continuum of services, we're providing what we can for our students using the OT for, as an example. One of the things that we would do, if we were to redeploy OT to the CPSE services, that would be pulling away from non-classified support. So, part of what we have to do is determine if we, as a district, believe in giving students that are not necessarily classified, support in the younger years, kind of front-loading it, making sure they have what they, they want, and then they continue on. And we prefer to get to them before the, the problem becomes an issue, instead of afterwards. Generally, when a child is brought to the CSE for review, there's problems already. And if RTI, if we do what we should be doing with RTI, we should never get to that point that was, on the first sign of a child struggling, we can implement and integrate services immediately, and they don't have to fail before they get support. So I think that's one of the things that I celebrated most with RTI. It finally gave us a way of making sure the services were provided at the first sign of problems, and if we're doing RTI right, we should see the number of classified kids go down. So I think we have to, to look at this, it's not just special ed, it is, it is the continuum from tier-one RTI to, to special education, and in between that, you have tier-two and tier-three, and we want to, we want to provide for our students what they need. And so, I think our philosophy is the Haldane philosophy, we're going to decide what's right for our district, and I can tell you that there is support for non-classified support. And so that conversation will be, do we want to provide additional OT services for the preschool CSE, or do we want to continue as we are and provide the earliest intervention without the necessity of having the child classified and getting that child back on track and moving forward? And so I think that that's more philosophically what we think or what we believe in, but it also helps us see areas that we can, we can shore up and support and, and maybe make some changes here. But we've made, there has been a large focus on providing... But we've made, there has been a large focus on providing the best support for our kids in RTI and special ed since I've been here. And I can tell you, and it was happening before that, it's a real focus because it's right for kids.
Just to build on that comment, like, I understand the rationale for how the organization calculated the availability ratio indices, right? Using the number of kids with IEPs? I mean, I'm just building on Dr. Bowers' comment. Using the number of kids with IEPs as how you create that ratio? But it doesn't really fit with the model that we are, as a country, right? Ideally wanting to implement, which is RTI, which is multi-tiered systems of support. And so I definitely want to, I mean, as a board member, I, it's interesting information, but I'm not sure I would take those. I would take those numbers and base any policy on them because it's not what we're trying to accomplish. It's just thinking about what services are available only for kids with IEPs.
Yeah, and so I don't think that was ever really the intent. But we just wanted, we wanted a different set of eyes in a place that, with expertise that could come in and make suggestions and then we go from there.
One piece, sorry. I have another question, sorry. I can't see, so it's harder. I didn't see which parent brought up the issue about parents, right? I mean, I understand, right? There's a, it's a really small amount of money for these evaluations. It's a lot of work to, you know, to do them and I understand that choices are made. But it, and I don't know if this is even remotely possible because I think we already have like five ideas for how we want to spend this pot of money for the current year. But I can throw one more idea on there. And it would be, you know, in an ideal world, I would love to see the same organization, you know, do some sort of, you know, and excuse the wonky language, but really some sort of really thoughtful random sample of parents of kids, probably both with IEPs and who've been referred to the Child Studies Team or, you know, Academic Intervention Services. And to get their, and to get their input. I think, I think it's a really valid point the parent made that a lot of the parents in this community with kids who have IEPs do invest a great deal of money. And I think, you know, it's a partnership, right? I mean, that's how we want people to look at kids with special needs is for it to be a partnership between the school district and, you know, and the family. But at the same time, I think it's, I think it is important to know from a broad, a representative group of parents with kids, what their experiences are, how they're, you know, how they're perceiving the services their kids are receiving. I don't know. I mean, again, I'm just throwing that out there, like, as just an idea. But I do think that's a really valid perspective.
So Peggy, if I can respond, it's Dr. Shoah. That's something that actually I started thinking about and conversing with the Learning Differences Committee over the summer about, you know, sort of entering my second year in this position and thinking about some of the reforms that Dr. Nyman's touching upon. And some of the things that I've just sort of collected on my own from observation and conversations with our teachers and other people, personnel services and special ed staff, that I really, again, as a special parent, feel like it's pertinent at this point to reach out into the community and say, you know, "What are your perceptions of what we provide at Haldane? Are your child's needs being met in a way that you feel is relevant and meaningful?" So that conversation started with learning differences over the summer. Dr. Bowers and I talked about it at our retreat in August. And it's something that I am developing now. It's sort of a tricky construct to put together because I don't have any a priori models to use. But it's something that I've kind of tinkered with and I think, because I am a special parent, maybe I can be sort of metacognitive about it and that'll help me develop it. But I want it to be a small and precise enough instrument to get as much of a population sample as we can, not just a random sample. But I think the more respondents I get, the better off we'll be. So it'll probably be accompanied by a letter home from me, just sort of asking in general for people to respond. I can't really incentivize it in any way, other than, you know, it'll help me help you. So hopefully it'll be self-fulfilling. But that's, that's, I guess, just the most recent news that I have to share about that.
And Dr. Shoah, you just, you alluded to it being a cohesive sampling, not just random sampling. And whenever, I feel like we talk about things like this all the time, like reaching out to the community and figuring out what they're really thinking about. And I feel like the thing I always say is, "But how about the people who speak Spanish and aren't going to get that letter?"
Right.
So I'm just going to say that. And, you know, I'm sure that's already on your mind. But, you know, it's important for us to understand how all of the parents are feeling and dealing with their special children.
Yeah, so I'll go back to my.
Identify what a random sample means. A random sample is a very particular way of making sure that you have a representative sample. And I think that's actually way more important, and it gets at Jen's point, than reaching out broadly and taking whoever replies. I think we need to be really, really, really thoughtful about identifying the population of parents with these kids and making sure that we hear from kids, from parents, who represent all those different strata.
Yeah, there is a threat of selection bias with an attempted population sample. So that's, you know, that's something actually that we can discuss further from a statistician's point of view because we do have a small population and it can be easily skewed. As we've seen from some of these numbers, it may appear that Haldane is, you know, one far extreme or the other, but we are a small district. And so those numbers can be easily swayed because of our small population. So that's something that I thought about quite a bit. And so statistically, it's sort of a conundrum that we face. You know, do we try to collect as much information as possible or do we look for something that's very directed and pointed? So maybe that's something that we can discuss administratively and at board level to, you know, to figure out what's most useful. I'm sorry, what?
She loves to talk about.
Well, then we're kindred spirits because I'm a total stat nerd.
No, but I think that the main, the main part of Tony's answer that I just want to draw attention to is the fact that he's already started thinking ahead to reaching out to parents, right? And so that that's, you know, that's something I'd recommend it and that's something that is already in the works. And I think that's really the important point to make and the rest of it is just, not gravy necessarily, but just next steps. That's great, thank you.
And the other, I think the big question is also the instrument because we want to have.
I can help you with that, too.
Okay, oh, good. Wow.
I can.
Thanks. Less word for me.
Julissa.
It's my very last question.
It's my very last question, but I wonder, in the discussion tonight in your audit, it's all about students with disabilities. Where do students with 504s fall into the category? And what impact do students with 504s have on staffing, support, as well as the possible survey and outreach in terms of parent input? I don't know what the numbers are in our district in terms of the number of kids with 504s. Is it K-12? But I know in the world I live in, they do impact support, billets, budgets and all that jazz. So if you could just.
504s were not part of the scope of the study. I mean, peripherally, we might have asked questions about AIS, 504 plans. Where are they, you know, where are they stored? Who conducts them? But it's not a special ed process, as you know. It's conducted entirely with the general ed. So 504 did not really feature in the work.
We have quite a few 504s in the district. Even though that's not something we measured, it's an important piece because it's sort of a tier, if you will, along the continuum. So in terms of the survey targets, that would be someone, you know, a group that I would want to survey as well because that's a really important part of the services we provide in terms of in-classroom accommodations and testing accommodations, program modifications. And going back to the language piece, I think that Peggy asked, or, no, it was Jen. That's something that we do in the office anyway, when we send home any kind of documentation because it's all legal. Everything that involves the CSC is a legal document. So we conduct, I don't know if it's common knowledge, but we conduct a home language. You know, that's part of the intake process for any new student is the home language preference. And so if it is a language other than the English, that was something we would absolutely provide. And so that goes into the instrument, too. Is it digital, is it paper? And based on that, do we differentiate by sending an individual survey to each home by the language preferred? Did I answer your question? Okay.
So I know we're, obviously, we're highlighting the special education department. But as you guys are talking and you have so many great initiatives moving forward and in the hopper, I feel like I want to know how it all went. Like, I feel like I want an update. I want to know, you know, at the end of the year, how did all go? What, where are we at with the initiatives, right? And I know that we typically don't hold departments as a board. We don't hold departments accountable for their goals for the year. So I don't know if it's appropriate to really ask that. But I do feel like, you know, we've highlighted the special education department. We've put money to highlight it. And there's great stuff, it looks like, coming out of this audit, some inspiration to do some stuff. I'm kind of feeling like I want to hold you guys accountable and I want to see what you guys are doing.
I think we do want to hold them accountable through all the processes, through strategic planning and deeper learning and.
But we don't ask for a report from like the math department on their goals and then what did they do through the year.
But, I mean, we started that conversation at the last meeting with the testings.
Well, I certainly think if we can let you know what our reflections were based on the assessment. And I think that would be very appropriate.
It wasn't my last question, but a program review such as this or an audit, I think, like you said, it's extremely important and actually, you know, brought to light a lot of things that we as a community don't always get to see or hear. And, you know, I applaud Tony for all of your work since you've been here and Dr. Bowers and everyone who's been here before you who has really helped put parents on the platform and the conversation for special education. But does the board conduct other audits or program reviews of academic programs like music, art, that really bring to light how much we're spending per pupil in special education? Do we have an idea of what benefit, like how our programs are doing academically? You know, do we have the right amount of staff for the interest of the students? Do we have, you know, the right resources for our teachers, the professional development? Like, what? I'm kind of shocked that the board doesn't hold programs or academic programs accountable for goals that attach to the strategic plan of the district. But my question is, why not and will there ever be? Will the board ever consider program reviews to see the status of, one, the quality of our programs, the training of our teachers, as well as are we really preparing our kids moving forward? Like, I've, in my years here, and there are not that many, but my daughter's in sixth grade now. She started kindergarten. I don't think I've ever watched a, or attended a board meeting where we've discussed a program review for arts or music or the status of those programs. So I'm just curious where the board, like, where does your, what are the boundaries for the board in terms of accountability to administrators and the school as a whole for the review of those programs? Are we doing right by our kids if we're not holding them accountable to those? Thank you.
So I think you're absolutely right, Julissa. There are measures that maybe are not brought to the table here at the board. But we do have these discussions and if it's something that we want to discuss, I would have no problem.
Yeah, and I'm sure, as you know, in your district and certainly in our district, part of the accountability process lies within the district itself. And so everybody, I mean, we have goal-setting on an annual basis. We have conversations on an annual basis. We have measurements. And this is, we've just gone through a program review and we will continue to go through different program reviews. As I said, we also have a transportation audit that's in the works right now. We have a lot of things on our platter this year with the potential bond referendum, but that doesn't mean that it will stop. We have funds that are put aside every year so we can, we can look more deeply and be reflective in our practices and help them. But we have constant conversations with the administrative team and with the teachers. It's a, we're a constant work in progress. And so as all districts are, you know, there's accountability measures for us from the state and there's accountability measures for us from the federal government. There's accountability measures we have for ourselves. So the, it's something that is talked about on a regular basis.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. It's just that those conversations don't happen here at board meetings. The board doesn't necessarily get involved with the math department's goals. That's something that the principals are involved with, the department chairs and the superintendent is involved with. That's not something we're involved with. So my question was, we just got involved a little more deeply with the special education department and do we, as a board, feel like it's appropriate to have some follow-up? So it's not that there isn't follow-up that happens on administration level. I'm just asking, you know, would it be appropriate to, you know, at the end of the year, just see how these things went?
And I think that's, I mean, it's good for us to share with the community how the things went.
But I, just to build on Jen's comment, I mean, I think it's important for us to really make clear, like legally, right, what the board's role is, right? Like, there, it's not that we've made a decision to not be involved on a regular basis in monitoring academic programs, but that we, but that that's, that's something we care very much about. But our role in making sure that quality academic and social-emotional programs are being implemented at the school is not by monitoring what happens on a day-to-day or month-to-month, you know, process necessarily. And that's, that's because that's, I mean, that's, that's, the board's role is, yeah, I don't know how to say it any more clearly than that, Jen, you probably can, or Laura.
I think you got it.
Well, I mean, just because, yeah, I mean, that's, we're not, we're, our role, I mean, we're lucky to have a board that actually has quite a bit of expertise in the field, but the, it's not, board members aren't elected to monitor what goes on in terms of academic programs on a regular basis.
And legally, specifically, special education.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't have the expertise.
We don't have the ability, or it's the law. I mean, that's not. But absolutely, we have been doing audits of various different departments. And we try to bring as many of those to the board, presentations, but not all of them do make it to a board presentation.
That's probably where we disconnect kind of, because this is the first time where, you know, we've had a good in-depth discussion about the findings and the impact that the numbers have on our program. You know, when we look at budgets every year, budget season, there's a discussion about what role does the board play in ensuring that the dollars are going where they need to go? But, you know, if that's the case and they don't make it to a public meeting in this capacity, I think maybe we should find a way to ensure that that happens with the public and budget season knows that the board is working really hard with administrators to be as transparent in reviewing programs and sharing the success of the programs as well as what the school is working on. I totally get the board lines in terms of what you're responsible for, but I think we need to have more celebrations like this on a more public basis to ensure that budget season people are informed, not just about the numbers, but about the impact the numbers have on our students' success, period.
Okay. Any other questions, input? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into the information reports, Mr. Wallach.
Good evening, everybody. I guess I'm up first tonight. So far, we've had a wonderful start in the elementary school. We have only had 11 days so far, but we are rolling. We've been rolling since day one. There's amazing things going on in every classroom, all 18 of our classes throughout our building. It's almost like a three-ring circus. I mean, there's different things going on in every little corner of the building, not just classrooms, but we use other spaces as well for small group instruction. So we've really, really had a great start. I know I presented the board with a few bullet points, but I just want to go over one of them more in depth. Next week, we're going to be holding a school-wide penny drive to raise funds for the victims of hurricane. to raise funds for the victims of Hurricanes Harvey and Irma. We feel it's important to teach our children to be empathetic, and this is one way to do so. This is a move that was actually spearheaded by first-grade teacher Katie Wild, so a shout-out to her. This was her idea. Every classroom will have a five-gallon Poland Spring jar to collect coins each day next week, and there will be a flyer going home the end of this week to parents. So when your children talk about it, you won't think they're crazy and don't know what they're talking about. Every day, the money will be counted. It will be a, a class activity. The older grades will help us. Mr. Doudar will be using some of his secondary DCI students to help us as well. And we're really going to try to see which class can, can raise the most money in just a five-day span, collecting pennies and some other silver coins as well. But we're not looking for anything big, but we're really just trying to get the children to understand how to help others. If we can start them at this young age of helping others, hopefully, it's something that carries with them throughout their, their time, not just at Haldane Elementary School and in our district, but throughout life. And we feel that's important. And obviously, there's a lot of people in the world, in many places, that can use our help, so we're going to be doing our part next week. So that's just what I wanted to share tonight. I know it's getting late this evening, so we'll, we'll leave it at that. I'm open to any questions, but hopefully, that, that's minimal at this point. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Silke?
So I'll also be brief. The first couple of weeks of school have been peppered with all kinds of excitement, all kinds of activities. I want to give a special thank you to the PTA for providing refreshments at the middle school curriculum night. Thank you to the teachers for making sixth-grade orientation, which was our first, you know, my first welcome back for the kids. So special to Rachel Formali for having a table at the middle school curriculum night, to the Haldane School Foundation for having a few words and a table promoting the fundraising event, the Country Gala. It really, it really is amazing to see the teamwork that goes into supporting our students. I'd like to just also highlight a couple of things that are going on in classrooms that are pretty exciting. In Simon Doudar's Discover, Create, and Innovate class, the eighth graders have chosen beautifying the outdoor recess area as their project. So I'm, I've, I've heard some whispers about a Gaga ball pit, and I'm really excited to see what they design and, and create. It's going to be quite something. And Heidi Gessen's Discover, Create, and Innovate class is in the process of formulating their civic action projects. And one of their ideas is, is improving the experience for children walking through the tunnel down to the river. So I thought that that was really interesting. In Angelo Brenca's class, the sixth graders are going to be, that's our new art teacher, the sixth graders are going to be interviewing the manager of Food Town to, as their client, to discover what the manager would like to see as art in the windows of Food Town. So this is just like a small, a small drop in the bucket of some of the things that are going on in our classrooms. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just two kind of brief notes again from my report. I'm very pleased to say we have 30 new students at Haldane High School, which, for us, is 10% of the population. It's not 30 more students. It's 30 new students. Our enrollment is up 12 from last year. But I have to say, the amount of work that Kristin Moscow has done, that Scott Manny has done, ensuring that the new students have kind of a partner to go through the process together, it's been, it's been exciting for us and a lot of work. But I want to welcome all 30 of those new students to Haldane High School. And again, our enrollment is back up over 300 at the high school, which it hasn't been for a few years. So it's still very small, but it did definitely have a, a positive impact and a nice impact on our community. In addition to that, last night, Evan was there, we were able to have a presenter last night for our parents, that we opened up to all parents in grades nine through 12 on the financial aid process. The presenter was phenomenal. I sat there, one, as a new high school principal, and two, as a parent of a student who will very soon be in high school, and it was very informative. We will continue to offer those for parents as much as possible. In addition to that, I'd like to point out, next month, we will have our nine, 10 parent meeting. I really highly encourage parents to come to that. We're changing up the format a little bit of that night, but it should be a great event for our parents of students in grade nine and 10. Thank you.
Dr. Shoa?
So just to summarize about the, the program review, I just want to say how fortunate I feel to have such a thoughtful and caring and dedicated village. Haldane, Cold Spring, Phillips Town, et cetera, et cetera. Everyone from Dr. Bowers, who was the impetus for this program review and came to me with the idea. The Learning Differences Committee, who really I rely upon to be sort of my point people in the, in the parent community and help me stay grounded with the larger community of parents. And our administrators, who, you know, and especially our, our teaching staff, who have been so supportive to me throughout this, you know, my, my first year and into my second year as things change. And we, we look at really evaluating, self-evaluating on a, on a daily basis as to never taking for granted what we do and why we do it, and always thinking about how we can do it better. So I want to thank everybody for that. And just one other topic, since I'm now the Chief Information Officer, I want to thank Dr. Bowers and Julia Sniffen for being patient with me as I lean on them to sort of look at our, our processes and our data and developing new ways of looking at it, new ways of handling it, new ways of reporting it. So more to come, I suppose, eventually on that. But I want to say thank you to both of you for helping me along.
Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Sana?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements. Homecoming weekend is October 13th and 14th. On the 13th, the football team will play under the lights Friday night. Saturday, we will have our soccer teams, our volleyball team here come out and support our student athletes. It's going to be a great weekend, a ton of fun. The fall season's off to a solid start. Our kids today, we had a volleyball game, I mean, I'm sorry, a soccer game. The girls won this afternoon against Pauling. Unfortunately, our volleyball team, the varsity level, lost today, but they're doing great as well. Second thing regarding homecoming weekend is I'd like to announce the first Haldane Athletic Hall of Fame class. Before I announce the inductees, I'd just like to thank the board and the committee for all their support. We've put a ton of work into coming up with this induction class, and we feel that, as a committee, it's a well-rounded group, both across the board in terms of generations and different sports. So I'm just going to read the names. If you could just bear with me for a second. I don't want to forget anyone. From the Haldane graduating class in 1937, Mike Scobha. From the Haldane graduating class in 1949, Joe Schatzel. From the class of 51, Frank Milkovich. From the class of 57, Patrick Shields. From the class of 61, Jack Ladue. From the class of 86, Brenna O'Connor. From the class of 1990, Josh Maddox. From the class of 1994, Jen Moran. And from the class of 2008, Brittany Shields. And we also are honoring Coach Ken Thomas and the 1989 girls varsity basketball team, who are our first state champions. So on the 14th of October, we are going to have our induction ceremony and our dinner. Please come out and support. The flyer, arrow the informations on the district website and the athletic page. If you have any questions, please email me or call me. I'd be happy to talk to you about it. It's going to be a great evening at Dutch's Manor. I'm looking forward to the event. I know the inductees are excited. I know the committee's excited. And the feedback I've got from the community has been very positive. And then the last thing I want to discuss is, starting this winter, we've made a change in our advanced placement process. For those of you that don't know what that is, that's basically the ability for seventh and eighth-grade students to test up and play junior varsity or varsity sports. The process has a slight change. In the past, parents have reached out, sent out their forms, handed in permission slips, and let their student try out. Starting this winter, I'm going to be the one that gets a recommendation from the varsity coach of that specific program. They're going to recommend the children that they feel can help the junior varsity or varsity team. We'll have a conversation. If we both feel that it's in the best interest of the student, I'll reach out to that family, and then we'll start the process, just like it was before, with the permission slip to test up, the doctor evaluation, the actual testing up. Nothing changes except for the varsity coach being the one that starts the process. So if anyone has any questions about that, please let me know. I think this will help us for several reasons. It will help us anticipate our roster sizes. It will help us make decisions earlier about the possibility of maybe having a JV and a varsity in certain sports. So it's just something that I think will help make things easier and will streamline the process moving forward. It's something that most schools already have in place, and we're just going to start that this winter.
So I just have a couple of questions about that. So currently, do the varsity coaches interact with the modified teams? Is that how they would know? Like, do they see them practice and say, oh, hey, that person should really be on varsity?
So being in such a small community, a lot of our varsity coaches can tell you the best third, fourth, a third-grade lacrosse player, the fourth-grade COIO star, the, the fifth-grade Pop Warner guy that's scoring the most touchdowns. We communicate so well with our parents and our coaches, and they're so passionate about their teams and their programs, that it's very hard to not know who's coming up and who's, you know, getting ready to help out at the junior varsity or varsity level. The varsity coaches, even though the varsity team is their main responsibility, they also help oversee the junior varsity and modified team. So there's constant communication between the coaches at the various levels. As a former varsity coach, when you have a program, in order to maintain success, you need to make sure that you are helping all of your levels in your program, not just focusing on your varsity team. And I think our coaches here do a good job of that. And I think that with this process, it'll just help make things better for the coaches, the, the kids, the teams, and myself. So I think it's something that, like I said, will definitely be beneficial in the future, and we're going to start it this winter.
And another thought that I had when I was reading the requirements, and it's, it's a question, really, is, would there be any value in including the middle school principal as somebody to recommend that the student should be testing up?
It, it's definitely something we can talk about. I know in the past, I leaned on Mrs. Sniffen occasionally if we had a question about the student's maturity, how they're doing academically. All those variables go into these decisions. With Mrs. Silke, I'd be happy to do, continue that and do the same thing. You know, in a small school, we often have more test-ups than larger districts. So throughout the course of the year, with the winter and the spring, we'll probably have, my guess is, between 12 and 15 kids want to test up. But at this point, it's up to the varsity coaches now to see a need or see the skill level and maturity level to make that recommendation. So I'd be happy to, you know, continue to talk to middle school principal and whoever I can.
It's just like, as you, we look at the, and something we talked about the last meeting was that there's, it's not just about the athlete's skill level, right? That there's that whole social, emotional, mental maturity piece. And I know that you're including the parents as part of the equation, obviously, which is super important. And I know there's some sort of Tanner scoring, mental testing scoring. But I guess I'm just wondering if it would be, and another important part of that social-emotional piece to have the principal be part of the equation, kind of formally, like you've made the other pieces formally? I don't know the answer, because you're the one who deals with it. It's just, you know, something I'm throwing out there.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely.
I think it's important to realize that how small this district is, that I, I think Chris probably can name almost every kid that walks through the cafeteria at some point. But it's great to know that there's always that communication. And I know you all have administrative council meetings. I'm sure these things come up at those meetings. So just to make it dependent upon, you know, one conversation, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's happening indirectly, is what I'm getting at.
And I would agree with that assessment.
Just one quick thing.
Sure.
Normally, I wouldn't even ask this question, but since we were talking about the cutting thing as well. Where, where, where will the philosophy be as far as if it's about bringing up seventh and eighth grader and verse that may cause a high schooler to be cut from the team? So like, where, what's the, the overall philosophy? Is it going to be, is the philosophy just to put the best team available between the students seven through 12? Or is the philosophy going to be, well, I mean, we'll bring them up seven and eight if we need to, to build the team, but if we can build a team with the high school, we are not going to bring up seven and eight?
So the philosophy should be that we're doing what's in the best interest of our students. And what I mean by that is, when we're thinking about bringing seventh and eighth graders up, the only reason a coach is going to make that recommendation is because they're going to play a strong role on either junior varsity or varsity program to help the other, you know, 10, 15, 20 kids on that team. So if the coach feels like that individual is going to help make the team more successful and enhance the experience for the rest of the teammates, then that's an asset. If it's something where, let me backtrack. The, the testing up process is not intended to just fill a roster. So it's not something where we want to pull a ton of kids up just because we don't have enough. That's not the intent. That's not what's in the best interest of our students. You may have a case where an eighth grader at the, you know, JV level may be better than some of the 10th graders at the JV level, and they may play more. And that's okay. At the JV and varsity level, we're putting a product out there that is representing our community, that should be not only, you know, good in terms of their talent and skill level, but mature and representing us in a positive way. It's something that could happen. You know, every coach has a different philosophy. Personally, at the varsity level, I think we're put, we should put our best product out there. And if that's mostly 10th graders, if that gives us the best chance to be successful, and that helps everyone on the team have the best experience, then that's how it should be. If you have seniors that are extremely strong and you're leaders, and then they're going to be the ones that play. So each team in each case is going to be a little bit different, and each coach is going to have almost a different philosophy. But like Laura, and, and we've said already, we're so small. I am constantly talking to our coaches. I am meeting with them. I'm talking to our kids. I know what's going on, and I'm trying to help our coaches navigate some of these issues. You know, but I don't think the testing up process and having coaches make recommendations is going to be a negative thing. I think it's only going to be a positive thing. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, great answer. Thank you.
Thank, I tried. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Any additional questions or comments from the public, about anything, before we dismiss our administrators to go home and come back right in the morning? All right.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any questions? I think these are all pretty straightforward. Did we, yes, you explained to me about item number three, right? Right. Yeah, I know. I just was going back. This has been a long meeting.
Item number three, yeah, I, I'm going to assume that you had the same question I had, so I'm not going to ask it, especially not in public.
It's all good. It's all good. Okay. Any communication from the remaining public?
This is really just for us. So the...
Wait, did we vote? We?
We already, we eyed.
I think we did it.
Sorry, I couldn't, I didn't hear it. I say aye, too.
So Chris addressed the issue of the testing up, but the other issue that arose at our last meeting was the issue of cuts or no cuts. That has not been addressed yet. Is it going to be, is that something on the docket? For you, like, the athletic department to consider?
It's something that, yes, we've, we've talked about it, and philosophically, there seems to be a shift in the district and what, and the board, and what they would, you would all like to see happen. And so we are, we are looking at making no cuts at the modified level, and then considering the best players and the cuts for the, for the upper JV and varsity. And so that will be, it'll be modified.
And is that something that, so I'm assuming, I mean, I, obviously the board was pretty much in that direction as a group, but is that something that like the coaches are on board with and the parents and like the community? Like have, have you done that kind of feel-out and like change, change the athletic handbook so that it's like super clear? Because currently it's a little interpretive.
Well, we're in the, we're in the discussion stages, but it looks like we're moving in that direction. And then when that, when we have a, a very clear message to give to the community, it will be put in writing within the handbooks.
Impressive.
So along the lines of, if, if, if they're going to put in a policy that there is cuts, like is it going to be, is, is there any type of limits for each team? Should, should there be a, for this team, there will be X amount of players?
And that's something that we ask to put, that's part of it. We need to have a very definitive roster size and go from there.
Well, I, oh, no, I don't, well, obviously it's based on the sport.
Like, for instance, soccer, you would need 11 players, right? For basketball, you need five players. So it's very different scale of how many you would be able to...
Really? Thank you.
Hold on a team. No, that's what I'm, that's what we're...
No, I get that, but what I'm getting at is to avoid the year-to-year issue. So like, for example, if, if, let's say, you, you say there's, there's 10 teams, 10 students on the basketball team and that's it, and then we're going to cut after 10, and then next year, you let 12 on, y, y, you know what I mean? So this way, year-to-year, you don't get the, the, well, that's not fair because you cut my kid last year at 10, but now all of a sudden, you're allowing 12. And, y, you know what I mean? So I think there should be a definitive number...
Yeah.
That goes from year to year.
Yep. We need to know the roster size.
Yeah, because this way then, I mean, obviously the sports are going to have different kids, but then you, you open up yourself for, for year-to-year, my kid was cut last year, but now you're not cutting this year.
Well, and we haven't even started to talk about the financial implications of, you know, uniforms and...
Well, that's why there should be a max on the, we should, we should set out that each team gets X amount of players.
Right. Yeah, and then there'll be a discussion when we get to the budget season because we did have $10,000 that was put aside in case we needed additional coaches. That it'll very clearly now only be for the modified teams and we're not going to be looking at adding additional coaches with, when we have a defined roster size. So that'll be a little bit different. I also have to say that just talking about it and kind of looking historically about the, the discussion that we're having now and the discussion a few years ago, and it seems like about every five to eight years, there's a swing in the philosophies. And so I know it's, it's happened before. This is the, the time in, in our time here where it's happening again. And so, you know, it's not an unusual conversation to have and it's in this situation, you know, this is where the, the philosophy is, and so we'll go in that direction.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? At this time, the board will convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular individual and no action will be taken at this executive session.
Are you making that?
I'm, may I get a motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.